You know I've traveled near and far to see the shining sea. I've seen a lot of places and people that were nice to me. One place I send my heart and this is how I feel. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the sand hills on a river called Cake Field. Special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one. Heard around the world. Sherman marched for the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing but stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville. Talking about my hometown Fayetteville.
Turn the mic on. Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the Monday, April 8th, 2019 Fayetteville City Council Meeting. At this time, we would ask that Pastor Leslie Blodgen of College Heights Presbyterian Church, and we ask that all would rise for the prayer, followed by if you would join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us bow our heads. Eternate God, our Father, there is one Fayetteville, North Carolina, and we come to represent her tonight. We ask that you will give us spiritual wisdom, spiritual knowledge, and spiritual understanding that we will all be on one accord as we deal with the business of this great city. We ask your blessing upon each of us individually and collectively. In Jesus' precious name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pastor, how you doing? And we thank you for the invocation. Would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself or your ministry?
Oh, my goodness. Blessings, blessings. My name is Leslie Blodgen. I am from Edisto Island, South Carolina, and I have been the pastor of College Heights Presbyterian Church since January of this great year, 2019. You've heard about me. Yeah, I've been told there's some things being said about me. I just hope it's good. Well, praise God.
Yes, sir. Well, thank you for joining us tonight. Welcome to the community. Very familiar with the church and think I came to a service just prior to your arrival.
Yes, sir.
But welcome to the community and thank you for coming and joining us tonight.
Blessings. Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, council. So we, this time we'll have a few announcements. We have, I will turn to my colleague, Madam Jensen. You have a special guest tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I would like to introduce Nyla Davis from the Cumberland International School. She is the representative of the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council. But before I let her speak, I wanted to recognize Stephen Ferran and Jasmine Cotton. They are also members of the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council, and they're both seniors. So I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Davis.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jensen. Hello, everyone. I am Nyla Davis, and I am from the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council. And I am very proud to say that we have recently announced our school-wide anti-littering campaign. We are challenging students and school clubs to collect as much trash as possible around their school and community. The winner will be chosen based off participation through pictures and the amount of trash that they have collected. The winning school will receive a traveling trophy where each year it will travel to the winning school. Also, the youth council is gearing up for the State Youth Council Spring Conference in Charlotte, North Carolina. We are looking forward to bringing home some awards such as Most Outstanding Youth Council and Best Service Project for Kindness Matters Campaign. This couldn't have happened without your support. So thank you all for supporting the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us. At this time, we'll have Councilmember Arp to tell us about the special day we have this week.
Well, Mr. Mayor, let me get my cap on and just want to share with everybody. We'll have the Fayetteville Fan First Look. That's this Saturday, April the 13th, from 12:00 to 3:00 p.m. And that'll be down at the stadium, the new Segura Stadium, the home of the Woodpeckers. And we want to invite you to come out, take an opportunity to stroll around the park, maybe see parts of the venue that you won't be able to see once it's in operation. And, but get a feel for your new ballpark and your new team. The team won't be there. They'll be there on the 18th of April. That's Thursday night. So about 10 days away, we'll have our opening game of the Fayetteville Woodpeckers. So an exciting time. We want to make sure the fans come out. That's this Saturday, 12 to 3:00 p.m. The ribbon cutting will be at 12 at the front of the stadium. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we will, I will ask that Ms. Tracy Brawls, the Budget and Evaluation Director, would meet me at the podium.
Once again, our finance staff has done an outstanding job. Recognition Government Finance Officers Association Award. The Government Finance Officers Association is pleased to announce that the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina, has received their Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for its annual budget. This is the fourth consecutive year that the city has received this award. The award represents a significant achievement by the entity. It reflects the commitment of the governing board and staff to meeting the highest principles of government budgeting. In order to receive the budget award, the entity has to satisfy nationally-recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation. These guidelines are designed to assess how well the entity's budget serves as a policy document, a financial plan, an operations guide, and a communications device. Budget documents must be rated proficient in all four categories and in the 14 mandatory criteria within those categories to receive this award.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
At this time, could we have Officer Percy Evans please come up to the front to meet the mayor? I think he's got some relationship to one of our senior staff members. Tonight, we have a certificate of excellence presented to Officer Percy Evans for your civic excellence and dedication to make your country and the city of Fayetteville a better place for its residents through an act of courage and selfishness. Signed, Mayor Mitch Colvin. And we'll let Officer Evans explain what this is all about.
Well, I really appreciate it. Like I said, I don't feel myself as being a hero or anything of it. I feel like I was just in the right place at the right time to help that young lady in her situation. Like I said, I feel like if anybody else was in my shoes and they were at the same situation, they would have did the same thing. So I really do appreciate this, and I'll continue to do my job and do the best in my ability. Thank y'all.
And you, and you all. And, and for the listening audience, if you don't know, he was very modest about it. But Officer Evans saved a young lady from a house fire over, that I happen to know her and her father. And her father came up to me and was almost in tears about how appreciative he was that he was there to react the way he did. And so he was very modest about it, but he saved the life of a young citizen, and he's definitely to be commended tonight. And this was just a small token of appreciation for what we did. Thank you, sir. All right, I think that does it. So we have Councilmember Hare and then Jensen?
Yes, Mayor. Just wanted to reiterate and let the public know that this is our As One Prayer Walk Week, something we've been supporting as individuals for a number of years. The walk itself would start in Festival Park. I think it starts at 10:00. And after the walk is over, everyone is going to come over and be a part of our ribbon cutting in the stadium. Then at 5:00, Mayor, we'll be having a gospel concert also at Festival Park. As One Prayer Walk.
Thank you. Yes, great, great event. Planned to attend. So a lot going on this weekend. Great city of Fayetteville. Well, now it's time to get down to business, council. And just before we do that, we would like to also brag on our wonderful esteemed finance team who receives awards after awards. So sometimes you look at the council and you say, you know, are those guys really good stewards of my money? But we've got an outstanding finance team to make sure they keep us in line. And so we appreciate you all ladies for what you do. All right, council, we'll get down to business. Item 5.0 is the approval of the agenda. Have a motion by Councilmember Arp to approve, second by Councilmember Wright. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Motion carries. Item 6.0 is the consent.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Crisp.
I would move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item 6.05. I'd like to pull that to clarify the wording of the motion to approve it.
Okay, we have, have a motion, Councilman Dawkins, that was a second. So we have a motion to approve the consent with the exception of item 6.05. There's a second by Councilmember Dawkins. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Consent. Item carries. Item 6.05. Mr. Crisp.
Mr. Mayor, without discussion, I just want to make some clarity in the resolution. And I move to approve the Phase 5 annexation utility improvement project for areas 18 and 19. The resolution declaring cost, ordering preparation of preliminary assessment role, and setting time and place for the public hearing on the preliminary assessment for April 23rd. And I want to add into the resolution declaring cost that the $5,000 assessment applies to single-family residences and multifamily and non-single-family residential will be at the price of $55.56 per linear foot and $2,545 per lateral. That is my motion.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Crisp. Very good explanation. Is that a second, guys? Okay, if you can hit the green lights for me so I'll track it like that. But I think the second was Councilmember Dawkins. Any discussion on the motion to approve item 6.05? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. All right, Madam Clerk, at motion carries unanimously. Question, Madam Attorney, on?
6.6.
Item 6.06. In the CAM, I know we felt that we knew that the inclusion of this into consent was with the guidance to reject all bids, but the CAM is not really clear.
It gives you two options in there.
Yeah, it gives two options, and it never really indicated that very clearly as to what this item covered. Can you explain that for us? I mean, we know what it covered, which was solid waste outsourcing, but the direction that went, that carried with the consent approval means what? The CAM is not clear.
Mayor, the item, the staff recommended action was, "Staff recommends the city council reject all proposals and have city staff continue solid waste collection services to the citizens of Fayetteville." And so with your adoption of the consent agenda, that is what you approved, which was staff's recommendation.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to be clear about it. It wasn't articulated very well, but understood.
May I comment?
Yes, sir.
If I may. Here again, this item says solid waste collection, outsourcing, bid recommendation. That doesn't really clarify for our citizens exactly what we're doing. I'm asking staff to be more definitive in the future in regards to what we're actually doing here. Now, we just voted to reject all of the bids and continue to have our solid waste department continue with trash pickup. But that's not what it says here in plain English.
Right.
For our viewing audience and for those who are looking on the web and looking at our agenda. I think we need to be a little bit clearer, Mr. City Manager, on these kinds of things in the future. Thank you, sir.
All right, Madam Attorney.
So, Mr. Crisp, what you are, just to clarify for the staff. So in that item, you would have liked to see some action words such as reject all?
Yes.
In the, in the actual title of the item.
Exactly, Madam Attorney, exactly.
Thank you, Mr. Crisp.
We understand those of us here and staff, but for our citizens, when they read this, it simply says solid waste collection, outsourcing, bid recommendation. And that is not totally clear to them that we're rejecting all of those bids. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Hare?
And Mayor and council, the reason that I was just bringing it up also, and I'm in support, it gives us those two options. That was all. And so if we went ahead and voted in the consent, it had the two different options, either to reject or not. So that's what it says in the options in our agenda packet. We're rejecting.
Yeah, so I think they're clear that we need a little more descriptive included in the CAM, okay? All right, so consent carries. So item 7.0 is the public forum. This is a time that any Fayetteville resident may have input and a voice in what, pardon me, goes on in their city. Due to policy restrictions, the forum will not last any longer than 30 minutes, and each speaker will be limited to only three minutes to address the city council on issues related to the city of Fayetteville. Individuals wishing to speak at tonight's public forum should have signed up with the city clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. If you are here to speak on the items that may be on tonight's agenda under the public hearing, ask that you please reserve your comments until that, to that public hearing. So when your name is called by the city clerk, ask that you come to the podium, clearly state your name and home address for the record. Then when you see the light located on the podium change from green to yellow, you have 30 seconds, 30 seconds left to speak. When you see the red light come on, your time has expired. Again, due to policy restrictions, we are not able to extend the given time. With that being said, Madam Clerk, and I apologize for the hiccups that have just come upon me, but Madam Clerk, call your first speaker. You scared him out. All right.
Mr. Mayor, we have eight speakers this evening. Our first speaker is Ms. Ari McNeil.
Hello, ladies.
Hello, how you doing?
I'll give it to the clerk. To the clerk.
Thank you. Copy for everyone. Sorry, I'm short. Good evening, city council, board members, commissioners, and committee members. My name is Ari McNeil, the mother of Antonio Stiles, the teenager that was murdered on 8/21/2017 at 8:15 at North Street Park, North Street, Fayetteville, North Carolina. The purpose of me standing before you is to discuss some ideas for that area. Some of you may know that I recently adopted the park in the memory of my son that you will see on page 8. Some of you may, in doing so, we keep this park clean as much as we can. We recently had a celebration of the sign, one-year memorial for my son's birthday on August 15. In the celebration of the sign and one-year memorial birthday of gun violence awareness and community event, I would also like to ask the city of Fayetteville to consider assisting in a community recreation center out there for the kids in the memory of my son and to name and after him where he lost his life at that park. Also, at a, within the community center, we would like a police annex to help assist with keeping the community safe. To bring assurance to the community of safety and reinforcement, I counted 19 centers in Cumberland County, and this was the only one that did not have a facility. On March 26, 2019, I met with the Parks and Recreation Center, the committee, and to present my ideas and request for the North Street Park, Antonio Biggie Stiles Park. After listening to my requests, they all voted yes. James McNeil and Ms. Adrian and their staff gave me permission to put the community center in that particular location.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Recently, some of the people that we have worked with has been Councilmember Coltrane. We work with?
Colleton.
Colleton?
Yes.
Colleton. And we've also worked with Major Ramirez, Major Whitaker, and other officers from the police force. ABC 11 has also came out and assisted with us. We've spoken with the members of Rustic Burgers. They're willing to assist with the, with the center as well. The center will be used for community watch meetings, mentoring program, tutoring youth on gun violence and awareness, as well as my nonprofit, Y-Digs, will be using the program as well. If you turn to where it gives you a breakdown of the project outline and who will be inside the facility, which would be my cousin Ari, myself, will be the ones there all day making sure it's watched over. If you look, you'll see some of the methods, which would be the mentoring program, the GSO, which is God Stiles Organization Gun Violence Awareness and Mental Health, Y-Digs program and advocacy programs. We want to provide them with books, information packets, youth sessions, and a safe environment for the children to play in.
And if you continue from page 8 to 10, would be more information about what we're asking. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ladies. Great job.
Our next speaker is Ms. Megan Gerber.
Hello?
Hi, good evening. My name is Megan Gerber. I live at 502 Argyle in Fayetteville. I purchased a home last year, and as part of my appraisal process, it said that I could not get the loan due to erosion issues in my property and a damaged stormwater drain. I reached out to the city, and they provided a statement from the engineering department that said at the rear of the subject property, there's a section of 42-inch concrete pipe that is damaged. The outfall is also separated at the joint, and the said deficiencies have contributed to erosion near the end of the pipe. The city takes responsibility for maintaining stormwater infrastructure and, to that extent, the erosion that has occurred due to this damaged infrastructure. We got to close on the house based on this letter. Eight months later, as part of my follow-up, I reached out to the city to see where the status was on this process. I was then received an email that stated, "As far as the policy to send to you, there is no written policy. Repairs such as yours are made at discretion of the Public Service Director Sheila Ambit. Several years, several months ago, she ordered that all repairs outside of the right-of-way, generally just past the edge of the city, should not be performed until a policy is into place. There are many other citizens in your same situation, over 50, that I am aware of. Some have expressed concern about being able to sell their homes if a policy is implemented that places the responsibility for stormwater maintenance on the property owner." I mention that because I see you're a Realtor, and this is something that your profession would probably find relevant. So I am a homeowner and a Realtor. I was made aware of this, that stormwater infrastructure would be taken over by the homeowner if this policy passes. I find that very difficult to comprehend or understand, and I'm very green at all this, as I said at the last meeting. But I don't understand how a homeowner is expected to maintain things of this nature. I have a pipe in my backyard. It's eroded over seven feet of my property. The city has come out and put up netting and fencing, and it keeps deteriorating. They have to keep coming out and putting more. And then they were told that I'm now responsible. The cost so far that I've looked into is over $40,000. I cannot do that. I don't know how many homeowners in Fayetteville can do that. The scary part of that is how is this going to affect our economic growth if people have to abandon homes when they move because they can't sell them? Because as you can see in the appraisal, they're not funding the loan when there's issues like this. There are homeowners that, you might have one you're not even aware of on your property because it's not damaged. So I'm just here to speak out that I don't understand how we can protect our citizens by saying we're going to put the cost of infrastructure on a homeowner. If you maintain a right-of-way, but you don't maintain anything after that, it's still not going to be an effective system. Up here might work, but if we can't maintain it ourself as homeowners, it's going to have a ripple effect, I think negatively, in our community. So I just wanted to be heard, and I appreciate you for letting me speak.
I agree with you.
Well, thank you. Staff, has there been any follow-up with her since that communication?
Yes, sir. We are aware of her situation, and we are following up on it. But some of it as well is the policy determinations of the council. But we have been in contact with her, and we'll continue to stay in contact as this makes its way through for council to give policy determination one way or the other.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Nancy Perry.
Hello? How y'all doing? My name is Nancy Perry. I live at 506 Eaton Street, Fayetteville, North Carolina. I'm here on behalf to speak about Subway again. Our employees are getting tickets every day. You tell me I have 11 spaces on Winslow Street, so I park in the first space. I get a, I have to move in two hours, so I move three spaces down and I get a ticket. They tell me I have to move around the block. So am I. Every two hours, I gotta move my car. How is that helping me? I have to clock out, go move my car, find a spot, come back, and do it again in two hours. We send our tickets to Mr. Colton through email. I haven't heard back from him. Has he been receiving them, getting them paid or what? But we get, after they're not paid, after a certain time, they send us a letter saying, oh, now you owe $40. And like forty dollars out of my check is a lot of money, okay? They tell us to go to the Assam parking over by the museum, okay? That parking violates our lease of section R twenty-two. Dick states we have parking at the building, okay? Early morning, my people get there at six-thirty in the morning. I'm not going to have them walk a half mile to get to the, open the store in the dark, or when my people close at night, they gotta park somewhere, or they gotta walk and be unsafe. I have females working on my night shift. I need eight parking spaces that we can park without getting a ticket. And this is a daily thing and a daily struggle. I've had the little meter guy come by and tell one of my employees that he will tow the vehicle. And my reply to him was, you tow one of my employee's vehicle, I'll have your job at the end of the day. Because this is an ongoing battle. Amtrak parks right across the street. They can walk from here to there. I gotta park down the road around the block, who knows where, you know? This is unfair. It's all we're asking for is eight spaces for my employees to park without getting tickets on a daily basis. You know, we, you know, they have, look at Amtrak, they have parking at the building, both inside the parking garage, we do not. They're saying we have to pay for our parking. We didn't have to pay before, but now I have to pay. So now I'm paying every few days, ten dollar tickets, ten dollar tickets, and they rise and rise and rise. Like I said, we've put everything to Mr. Colton, which is our representative in District Two, and I haven't heard back from him, but we do continue to send the stuff to him, hoping that they're getting paid. If we get the letter, then we have to pay. But I thank you, and you have a great day, and we appreciate your time.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, you have something to add to this?
Yes, sir. Ms. Perry, we will talk with you and staff again. We issued you eleven hang tags to park in the construction zone behind the medical arts building, and if that is not sufficient, but we'll meet you out in the hall, Kristoff, if you can, to try to make sure that we walk you through that process again. But we did and do believe that we have beyond met the-
We haven't got any hang tags.
Ma'am, we'll be happy to talk with you in the hall.
Okay.
Mayor, our next speaker is Etiosa Obanar.
Good evening, everyone. I appreciate your time.
Good evening.
I'll just start first by responding directly to the statement I was-
Well, I need your name and address, okay?
You're right. I'm about to get right into it. My name is Etiosa Obanar. The address I'm representing is four seventy-two Hay Street, Fayetteville, North Carolina. I'm just going to start by responding to the statement that was just previously made. Even when my employees have those hang tags and are parked in that site, they still get tickets. So we have a problem. In my recent coordinations with people, I've actually been hearing that, quote-unquote, "they did not have parking in the lease agreement," which, I don't know who told them that. I'm hearing that from Martin Marlowe. I'm hearing that on the side of the city. That's not true. As Ms. Perry said, section R twenty-two of our lease from October second, two thousand, indicates that we have at, yes, sir, two thousand. The, I don't know, can that, can we have back and forth?
It's your time to talk.
Okay, I just wasn't sure. The amendments are just follow-ups. I have letters from my attorney, and we can go through that as well. The, it indicates that we have adequate, non-exclusive parking at the building. Just want to get into this at-the-building thing. I'm sure many of you on here are privileged to have children. If you call your child and they tell you that they are at home, you don't expect to get home and they are actually around the corner or across the street, the neighbor's house. You expect them to be at home. So when we hear that we have adequate parking at the building, we expect to have that parking at the building, not around the corner. They indicated that we have places to park, but there are still significant issues with that. Ms. Perry talked about them, the ones off Winslow, et cetera. Let me get into something that explains why that's an issue. Let's say that I work. I have work at ten a.m. So I arrive to work at ten a.m., and I park in one of these so-called designated areas. That parking is only two hours, as Ms. Perry said. That means that I have to go out and move my car in two hours. But hey, you know, okay, gonna go move my car. That means I have to move my car at noon, which is in the middle of lunch. And I don't know if any of you have been inside Subway at lunch, but there could be easily thirty people in line waiting, and that means I have to leave my crew and go try to search for parking. And I'm not sure how customers would feel seeing an employee leave the line, pick up their keys, and walk out the door. But, okay, you know, I'm good to go move my car. But when I get out there, how am I going to find parking at noon? There's a, there's a train coming at one oh-five. Where am I going to find parking? And then, as Ms. Perry said, I see a parking space three spaces down, I pull in, I'm still going to get a ticket. Because turns out, I actually have to go to the next block, which brings me back to the violation of having parking at the building. So we're just facing significant issues about this. My employees literally have expressed to me that they are afraid to come to work because they don't want to get tickets. That's what Ms. Perry said. That kind of financial burden on my employees is unfair, and we're happy to speak with anyone afterwards, and I have some documentation to provide as well.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
So, Mr. Hewitt, you said you had someone to talk to both of them, correct? All right.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Iran Iranami Mohammed Smith.
Honorable. Don't spill your coffee, okay?
Imam.
Slim and trim. That's how you do it. Greetings, everyone. With the name of God, the minerva, the mercy, I am Imam, not Iran, Imam Iranami Mohammed. And yes, Vietnam vet and founder of the Muslim Masjid Omayyibn Said from nineteen seventy. Five of us from Fayette State University, then everybody else that you heard about Kane. Let's make that clear. We're very, very pleased with the growth and development, and we need to focus on the positive, not just, so we really need to take care of our brothers and sisters who come and playing tonight. You see, it's very easy to fix that. On a bigger note also, we want to focus on heroes in Fayetteville. On Murchison Road, we have tremendous heroes. Buffalo Soldiers, Colonel Charles Easy, Triple Knuckle, Tuskegee Airman, part of my family, and many others. Mr. Marion Rex Harris, as he said on Weeder Radio Station thirty years ago, a black hero. We want to make his dry cleaners on Murchison Road a museum. Marion Rex Harris, when I got back from Vietnam in nineteen seventy, I went over there and came back. I didn't go to stay. I was a senior in college. He built two dry cleaners made of brick. People tried to destroy his business. Had one on Bragg Boulevard, the Germans came out from Fort Bragg for that grand opening. He built one on Murchison Road, brand new. He was a multimillionaire and a coal mining in Kentucky. So we wanted to honor him at his old dry cleaners on Murchison Road because when I got back from Vietnam, he built that cleaners beautiful. The Klan came through and shot in the window about a week later. So a group of us in the community got together with Howard Fuller from Durham, who's in part of that movie that you see going around, and we protested, did a rally, and they didn't come back. We told them, you better not come back. So we want to make that a museum to honor him, Bill Bowser, and many of the other major heroes in that whole area, and we intend to do it. Thank you very much.
Right, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Anthony McLeod.
Hey, sir.
My name is Anthony McLeod. I stay at, my name is Anthony McLeod. Anthony McLeod, four twenty-one, Apartment E, Truth Court. My concerns is the traffic flowing, speeding through the area when the children are at play, and I have a niece and nephew that live across from me, and I'm out there sometimes, but I'm not always going to be around because I'm in school full-time, and I'm concerned about one of the cars hitting the children. I was just seeing if District Two Councilman can try to get us some signs for slow down children at play. Because it gets really heavy around after school, it turns out. And last Sunday, I had to push one of the girls on the side to keep her from getting hit by a car on her bike. And I was hoping that y'all could try to work and get some signs or something to help the children.
What street is that, Anthony?
Four twenty-one, Truth Court. It's on Camp, down there by Walker Spivey and Robin Meadows and Sycamore. Because we do have a lot of children in the community that be out playing. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Michelle Walls.
Good evening.
Hello.
My name is Michelle Walls. I live at fourteen thirty-six Valencia Drive. I would like to address the quality of life here in Fayetteville and the corruption within the city management and the Fayetteville Police Department. We moved to Fayetteville through the military and bought our current home a little over ten years ago. My husband is a twenty-five-year decorated veteran in the All-American City Soldier Sanctuary. During the last four to five years, we have asked the city and the police department to enforce noise ordinances and protect citizens from harassment by residents who are born and raised here in Fayetteville. Unfortunately, there is apparently nothing that can be done. Four to five years ago, we asked the Fayetteville Police to address noise violations in, on Kane Road, as the noise could be felt through our brick walls. The more we asked for enforcement, the worse it got. It became worse yet again with new neighbors. Responding police officers did not take any action, stating that the manner in which the noise, city noise ordinance was written was not enough to allow officers to take action. Furthermore, we were informed that noise violations can only be cited when police officers were able to hear the violations. On a side note, we have video and audio showing noise violations occurring in the presence of FPD officers who took no action and did not ask the music to be turned down or off. My husband and I met with the Assistant City Manager, Mr. Bauer, to rewrite the noise ordinance to make it easier to enforce, which the council did approve. However, police officers will not take, will still not take action. The revised city ordinance, city noise ordinance, should make it possible for residents to take offenders to civil court. We have contacted police officers to help document noise violations in order to help us build a case. Instead of helping, police officers tell us there is nothing we can do. In fact, just the other day, Sergeant Franklin from the Fayetteville Police Department has told us that if we call nine-one-one about a noise complaint again, that he will arrest us for frivolous misuse of nine-one-one. In the meantime, our neighbors continue to use noise as a harassment tool. We have video and audio of neighbors and their friends, under the advisements of our neighbors, driving by our house, blasting their radios and/or honking their horns excessively. The city policies and refusal to enforce city ordinances have emboldened and allowed citizens to continue their harassment. Speaking of harassment, at least a year ago, we have contacted the city to inform them that their city sanctioned public platform, Seek, Click, Fix, or Fay Fix It, is being used as a harassment tool. We've asked the city to look into the matter and put forth measures to more closely monitor the comments. My husband tried numerous times to contact the city manager, Mr. Hewitt, but received no response. And I'm going to skip over here, well, I should add that restrictions must be put in place to safeguard residents and comments should be held pending admin approval, so others do not have to be subjected to this kind of abuse. Corruption and double standards are evident, and there's my time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, our final speaker is Mr. Robert Walls.
Evening. My name is Robert Walls, one four three six Valencia Drive.
Good evening.
Sergeant Major Crisp, as a former standard bearer, I really need you to look into this. The emotional strain that the city manager and his lack of management, and by the way, you gave him a raise after I'd contacted him. Mr. Mayor, I understand. I'm not a registered Democrat, so not your concern. This city has caused me enough emotional grief that I can't in good conscience let other Americans or veterans consider investing in this city. I have video footage, and the police chief was aware of this nine months ago, along with city mayor, said city manager, mayor, because I emailed you, in regard to police corruption, police issues. I have statements on video, and no one contacted me, of a police officer saying, do what you need to do, we'll come back with body bags. I have direct threats in front of police directed towards me, and the police officer just did nothing. Sergeant Franklin, after the discussion that I had with him yesterday, I fully expect city and police retaliation, because that's the version of All-American here. It's Chicago politics under an American flag, and it's appalling. The emotional stress and strain that I've been put under by the lack of management by your city manager is unfathomable. Mr. ARP, as somebody who has defended this country against all nations, foreign and domestic, I really hope you look into this. Mr. Mayor, I understand. Thank you for your service. We'll not further degrade the sacrifice I've made to this country. For the rest of you here, I really hope you look into it, because this city does not deserve the All-American status if this is what you allow.
Mayor, we have no further speakers.
Right. Oh, well, with that being said, okay? All right, well, we'll move right along to the public hearing. Public hearing. Individuals desired to speak at tonight's public hearing must have signed up with the clerk by name and address before seven p.m. this evening. Fifteen minutes will be allowed for each side of the issue at the public hearing. Individual speakers will be limited to three minutes each, unless by previous arrangement, a single spokesperson is designated, in which the case, the spokesperson may use the entire fifteen minutes. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium, clearly state your name and address for the record, may then address the city council. When the light changes from green to amber, you have thirty seconds remaining. At the end of your allotted time, the timer will ring. Mr. Toller.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, city council. This public hearing is to start the process for the city to issue limited obligation bonds, and this may include three projects. The Lake Rim Pool, potential baseball stadium budget increases, and the proposed increase to the parking deck. This issuance will come back to council for final approval on May thirteenth, and it can be tweaked along the way. So very briefly, I wanted to give a kind of a debt snapshot of the city as of June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. There's three different types of debt the city can issue. General obligation bonds, revenue bonds, and then limited obligation bonds and installment financing are in the same group. So as of June thirtieth, the city had eighty-three million dollars of outstanding debt. Two-point-nine million of that is in the general obligation with the maturities from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-five. Then for lobby and installment financing, there's seventy-three-point-nine million with maturities of two thousand nineteen to two thousand thirty-eight, the majority of that being the baseball stadium and the parking deck, and then the rest is vehicles and equipment, which we finance on a yearly basis. And finally, you have the stormwater revenue bonds, which is six-point-six million, and their maturity is two thousand twenty-six. Now to look at the issue in front of you, the not-to-exceed amount is eight million, and as the process begins, it is industry standard to have the not-to-exceed number higher than what actually may be needed, with the caveat that the city cannot borrow more than is needed. Also, you can see the proposed revenue sources and the budget for the projects. So looking at the expenditures at the bottom of the slide, you have the Lake Rim Pool for around three million dollars, the projected or potential baseball budget increase of two-point-five million, and then the parking deck potential increase of one-point-five million to equal seven million dollars, and then there will need to be some issuance costs along with that. So with that, that's all I have as far as the presentation, then I have a resolution and then a motion.
All right, thank you, sir. With that, we will, Madam Clerk, we'll open the public hearing. Please call your first speaker.
Yes, sir. We just have one speaker speaking in opposition, Mr. Jerry Reinal.
Mr. Mayor, distinguished members of the city council, good evening. My name is Jerry Reinal, five sixteen Deer Path Drive. April fifteenth, a week from today, many citizens are going to, you know, make their final payment to the federal government. Unfortunately, or fortunately for many of the poor people, they don't pay the federal government a lot. Their biggest obligation are property taxes, adwarem taxes, fees, and things like that in the local city and county governments. My concern is, the past couple of years, we've heard on more than one occasion that the cost of baseball, there was a ceiling, wasn't going to go higher than this, and this, and this, and this, and then we see amendments, resolution changes to adjust for issues arising from weather or whatever. These are all natural things that everybody understands are going to occur under normal circumstances anyway. And my concern is that eventually, the bond structure is not going to support these cost overrides that we continue to see raising, and this stuff is going to wind up becoming a tax increase on those same citizens. Because they're poor, they're not going to pay the federal government anything, but they're going to pay, they're going to pay property taxes and- they're going to pay, they're going to pay property taxes and risk the challenges associated with that. So I just ask perhaps due diligence on additional endeavors in regard to this, and it really bothers me when we have public funds paying for a public parking deck that the public's not going to have much access to. And I appreciate your time, and thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, we have no further speakers.
All right. With that, we'll close the public hearing, and I think there was a question by Council Member Dawkins.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Tolan, if this gets approved tonight, you said we could tweak it, so we're not committing to the million and a half on the parking garage. That number can be changed.
That's absolutely correct.
Okay. Okay. And generally, because I know the group that is building the parking deck for us, are they charging us anything for their work? Are they any type of fee as the project manager of that parking deck?
I do not have the information in front of me, but I'm not aware that they are charging a fee.
Okay. Okay. So you wouldn't know if generally a project manager would be at four percent or five percent or six percent?
I mean, that's a general number, but as far as what the individual budget breakdown, I just don't have that in front of me, but I can get that answer for you.
Mr. Bauer.
Evening, sir. Christoph Bauer, Deputy City Manager. We did not provide for any kind of management fee as part of our contract in this case.
Okay. And this commitment is like a not-to-exceed that we can borrow, is, thank you, Mr. Bauer, not-to-exceed that we can borrow. Is it eight million or is it seven-point-ish million?
The ceiling is eight million.
The ceiling is eight?
Right.
So that's what you're going to let the local government commission know?
Correct. But within the application, it'll detail it specifically, because they will only approve what the city needs, so we just couldn't go and ask for a flat eight million. Everything has to have the backup behind it, so like the pool number, it won't be an exact three million, it'd be three-point-zero-one, you know, so.
Ish.
Yeah.
Okay. And the timeframe involved, because this goes forward, and then they review it, and then they send it back to us, and then we actually do a vote. And then we, you'll come back with some different numbers for us to consider, I guess, is the point I'm trying to make.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Dawkins. Councilman Waddell.
Thank you, sir. I would just like to go on record as expressing a bit of frustration in the fact that this is presented the way that it is, because it can become very unclear to somebody who is not, we had the privilege of being explained how this is all working in our dinner meeting, and I would like for you to take a moment and just kind of go over why it's happening this way, why everything is included at this time in the manner that you did, but I just want to express frustration in the fact that this particular line item, and when I speak of this line item, I'm speaking specifically of the parking deck, is included in this conversation because it almost reads as if we are granting permission for that one-point-five to be allocated to the parking deck, when that is not, if we are to vote in agreement with this, that that is not necessarily what we're doing. So I would just like for you to really clarify for the purpose of, those who were not in the dinner meeting, in terms of the general public, why it's packaged this way, what that ceiling represents, and what happens if we decide, once we make a decision on how we want to move forward with the parking deck.
Okay. So the initial packaging is due to, there's issuance costs, closing costs associated with this, so if we were to issue them three separate different issuances, you would have three different sets of closing costs. So it was advantageous for the city to roll these up into one, and then you set up this not-to-exceed number. But like I said, we can dial it back, we could dial it back to five million if we wanted to, but once we start this process, you can never go up. So once you set the not-to-exceed at eight, and whatever council's direction, then that's what we'll borrow is the final number. So that's the reason to package it, is to save money on closing costs, and the way to borrow money for this type of manner needs to be in the limited obligation or installment financing, as the only group that we can do it. So that was, that's the main reason why it's packaged, and like I said, you can't, once we start this process, you can't go up, but you more than, you more than for sure can go down.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilmember Arp?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to dovetail off of Councilwoman Waddell's question. I'd like for you to walk the dog on this. We're going to, we're going to go borrow money from whom? If we, if this is the option we're trying to, we're trying to do, what are our options for borrowing money, so the general public understands?
Well, for this large amount and for the timeframe that we're looking to do, we have to do a public offering. So what, there'll be?
So that's with the limited, it's a limited government, can you define that?
What do you mean?
It's a limited government obligation bond, right? You have to go to the LGCA?
Right, so you apply through the state, and that, it's a, you apply through the state's treasurer's office. Their division is called the Local Government Commission. It's an application process, and what they do is they vet the application. Like I said, even if, you know, the city had no debt and a hundred million dollars in fund balance, the LGC only approves what they deem, not necessarily necessary, but what they can see, okay, these costs are allocated for X amount of dollars. So like for the pool, for example, we'll show them the bid tabs, we'll show them the architect contract, we'll show them the FFNE, the furnitures, fixtures, and equipment. They'll get all that in a packet, then they'll meet as a committee, then they'll vote to approve it or disapprove it. Then it'll come back to this group for final approval.
So what's the timeframe? That's what's driving the reason we're talking about this tonight. There's a timeframe that you have to meet. What's that timeframe?
Right, so they meet once a month, so we're looking to get, you have to give them about a six-week lead time, so we're trying to get on the May agenda for, I think they meet the second week of the month, so we're trying to get on that second week of May, their agenda, and then once they approve it, then they'll come back here. No, they meet the first week, excuse me, then they'll come back here the second week of May, and then we'll, the closing date is scheduled to be in June. So then you offer the bonds, we'll get our credit rating by then, and then banks will come and bid, and then we'll get the best interest rate that's in the market.
So then what are the other funding options that are being presented to the council for consideration?
Currently, I'm only presenting this option.
Okay, and that's where I think we've got a mistake, because I think in the work session last week, we clearly said we wanted other options, and I don't see other options.
Well, we have time for other options, and I'm sorry to cut you off.
Well, I'm just, the way this is being presented, and I agree with Councilmember Waddell and other members of the council, it looks like the only option we're bringing to the table is this option, and that's incorrect, and it's not the guidance this council gave in a work session last week. We said we wanted to see all the options, we wanted to see what options were available, and that we wanted to discuss what other terms were available, that we weren't agreeing to anything. So I want to be crystal clear with you, the manager, the public, and everybody else. You know, I'm not voting for anything tonight, other than I'm going to take into consideration allowing staff to go forward to contact the LGCA, but there is no authorization of expenditure of any funds tonight. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. And so before I go to Councilmember Crisp, I did have a couple of questions for you. Ms. Broll, included in this bond packaging is about three million dollars for Lake Rim's pool, which was actually approved last budget year. What were your plans to finance that prior to this, adding it to these other items that we just recently found out about?
If you recall, the pool was added after the recommended budget was presented, and what we did was move some funds around so that we could finance that pool over twenty years within our capital funding plan. So if you're only financing one facility, three million dollars, the issuance costs for a lob versus what we call an installment financing or a private placement financing with the bank are higher, but if you go directly bank financing, you don't get as favorable an interest rate as you might with a lob. But our plan, when the budget was adopted and the ordinance was adopted to fund that project ordinance for the pool, was for installment financing.
Thank you, ma'am. So, you know, I have some concerns too, Mr. Tolan, that basically what we're doing is, we're applying for credit, and we're seeing what we pre-approved for, right, which is a maximum of eight million in this, if this is passed tonight.
I think you.
And you can utilize that in whatever increments you choose. Is that right, if we want to keep that in there? But you're applying for the full amount.
Right, and it has, but it has to be tied to these three projects.
Right. And so the problem that I have here is, is, and, you know, when PCH came and presented this to us, you know, there was some back and forth about what this was related to, what the additional costs was contributed to, and we acknowledge we had a valid contract, but this, to me, as they explained it a little deeper, was about creation of jobs and adding to the tax base, which we all support that. But now, I'm a little taken aback that before we had an opportunity to work that out, that we've got the maximum amount that they've discussed in this figure, before we've had an opportunity to find out what the true numbers are, and that we would potentially be borrowing one and a half million, paying back six-hundred-thousand dollars in interest for something like that. And so I think that that has preceded the council's ability to work through these things with PCH. I feel that, even though I understand we're not obligated to do it, it seems shameful that we waste our time asking for a maximum amount that we may or may not fund, and kind of limiting us in a scenario that we may not use in this presentation tonight. And so I think that this was very premature, and the direction that I heard in the work session that we spent three and a half to four hours in, was that we would get more information and work this out. So I would like to know how it is and why it is that we've been asked to do this tonight.
I'd like to take some of that. One of the questions was, we had to publish this in the agenda for the public hearing tonight, and so as you may recall, I mentioned it to you, and it may have gotten caught up in some of the things that we talked about, but in order for us to be able to publish the public hearing notice for tonight and to have a public hearing on those three issues, we needed to put something in the public hearing notice. As you've said, and Jay has said as well, Mr. Tolan, this does not obligate the city in any form or fashion. We are very concerned, as always, about getting ahead of the council. The issue and the funding that is in the proposed public hearing tonight, also related to the additional costs being requested for the baseball stadium, the council has not determined exactly how much of that would also be those acceleration costs and costs caused by, or determined to cause by the delays because of weather impacts. We've not decided that either. The only thing that this does tonight is it gives the council the opportunity, when those decisions are made, for you to be able to have available funding available through this financial tool, the lobs, if you choose to use it. As Mr. Tolan said during the dinner meeting, if council decides on, let's say, the Lake Rim Pool, that at some date subsequent to this, you'd like to pay for that through existing financial resources or fund balance, if such is available, we could swap that out as well. This simply preserves your ability to go to the LGC and make application. But given the conflicts of events that we've had all at once, again, the stadium costs, the requests from, for additional funds from PCH for the city's parking garage, and then trying to find, complete the financing and put it in place for the Lake Rim Pool, it was, in our belief and recommendation, that lobs would be the best way to package that, but clearly it is council's option as to how you'd like to pay for that, or for those items as it relates to the stadium or the parking garage, when council decides at what level, if any, you'd like to cover those as well. This simply tonight puts in place the mechanisms for us, if you choose, to ask the LGC and to go through limited obligation bonds. But we clearly, clearly understand, but last week when we had the work session, we had already published the public hearing notice as required, because I think it requires how many, ten days' notice beforehand, and again, I apologize if I wasn't clear when I spoke to you about that, but I did mention to you that it would be a public hearing, and it in no way obligated the city, and no way obligates the council. And not only was that shared with the council last week, tonight during the dinner meeting, but it has been shared exhaustively with the PCH group, as well as with Barton Malloty.
Yeah, I'm crystal clear on that procedurally. Mr. Hewitt, my problem is, is that you all have planned for dates that we didn't, weren't privy to. You knew when your public hearing deadlines were, you had this package then. That's my issue. It's not necessarily that I don't understand what we're voting on or taking action on. I did not like the process and the protocol, because it appeared that certain dates and timelines were met that were not shared with us, and now puts us in a situation that you wanted us to react before your deadlines. But Councilmember Crisp?
A lot has been said, but I'm going to say what hasn't been said. And it's been said already that we're trying to beat the timeline on some of these projects. We're trying to get it done. The first process is the public hearing. Secondly, if we say go, then it has to go to the Local Government Commission for approval to us, for us to borrow, not to exceed eight million dollars. Now, there are two words that haven't been said, and I'm going to say them now, as necessary, as necessary. Those are important words, because it doesn't necessarily say that we're going to spend these amounts of money, but we've got to secure approval to borrow these amounts of money in the event that we need them. Now, here's the deal. Tonight, we have just voted and put one million, nine-hundred-eighty-thousand dollars, four-hundred-and-eighty-eight, one million, nine-hundred-eighty-thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars back in the general fund. Yeah, we did that. Yeah, on six-point-zero-four, Mr. Mayor.
I said, I saw that, I said, use that.
We put that back, and that was monies that were left over from previous projects where staff, in their diligence, did not overspend on those projects. So there's, there's almost two million dollars right there that we might be able to use, as Mr. Hewitt said moments ago, to shore up some of this. So we've got time to deal with this. What we don't have time to do is miss the deadline with the Local Government Commission, because if we miss it in May, this thing is going to be dragged out to July or August. It's that simple. We're not borrowing the money. We're asking for permission to borrow the money as necessary, all right? We're trying to cover ourselves and try to keep these projects in the timeline that we're hopeful of, all right? We're not saying tonight that we're going to spend two-point-five or three million or one-point-five. We've got time to look at each of these and make logical decisions about how we're going to deal with it. As I said, we've got two million dollars almost, and we just put back in the general fund tonight.
So that would save the taxpayers six-hundred thousand if you use that versus this. That's what.
If we use that for one of these, that saves us six-hundred thousand dollars, perhaps over twenty years. So we've got some options here, but what Mr. Tolan is asking us to do is to approve for him to go to the Local Government Commission and ask for the authority to float a lob, a limited obligation bond, not to exceed eight million dollars. We have not said, Councilman Dawkins, we're going to pay these fees yet. We have not said that. We have not said to him, "Go borrow the money." We're saying, "Get permission to borrow the money," that and nothing more. Thank you.
All right, Mayor Proton?
Question for Mr. Bauer related to the two-point-five million for the Seagra Stadium. Two-point-five, for the stadium, stadium?
Segra.
Segra, not Seagra. Seagram seven, you know, Segra, you know, anyway. Back in December, we did the budget ordinance amendment, roughly two-point-five million dollars, if I, for additional costs. Of that two-point-five, there are some questioned costs, whether they're legitimate or whether they're going to be covered by insurance, there's a multiple, but two-point-five was a conservative not-to-exceed for the final budget ordinance amendment for the stadium.
Well, actually, at that time, sir, we did, the budget amendment we made at that time was just for furnishings, fixtures, and equipment.
Okay.
And there were certain numbers, only one-point-two-five came from our general fund, another million came from funds from the Woodpeckers and the Astros. So. fund. Another million came from funds from the woodpeckers and the Astros. So, we're only including one point two five from that budget change here, because that's the only obligation that we're paying. Currently, it's general fund dollars that would come from cash.
Right, and then we have to pay ourselves back.
So, this would allow us to pay ourselves back, and stuff like that over time. We've added another one point two five.
That's where I'm trying to get to.
That the council hasn't acted on, that is a risk, that we're trying to make sure we have that available, should that risk come forward, and council agree that that's something that we need to, uh, cover. So, that's that's a future decision. One point two five's been made in in December. One point two five is something that has not yet been decided.
Right, and I just want to put that on the record, that the two point five, um, half of that, we haven't decided whether we're gonna pay yet.
Correct.
Because we have to go through whatever procedures to see if it's our responsibility or maybe somebody else.
Insurance or something else.
So, one point two five.
He made a decision in December.
But we're gonna ask for two point five, just in case.
Absolutely, again.
Thank you.
Um, second round, Councilman Art.
No, I just, I like, I wanna thank Councilmember Moan and Chris for highlighting some key points. The 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 bottom line is, we have options, and I just want to make sure we're looking at all our options, a- and a bond's not necessarily the option, it is a option. Uh, but we have options, and we're looking forward to staff coming back and presenting information, so we can make a deliberate decision. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Dawkins?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Councilmember Chris, you are exactly right. Uh, you are an eloquent orator with much wisdom. You were able to make my point. I was struggling to make my point, to make sure the public understands that just 'cause we're asking to borrow this money, we're not borrowing this money. Uh, I wanna use some of that money you saved today when you made that motion to, uh, consent, and I second it, because I knew we were gonna get that money back, and we need to use that money, and not, I don't wanna borrow any money we have to borrow, because now with what we've seen with the legislature, and the possible Civil War history and and Reconstruction Center, we we may have to figure out how we find seven and a half million that we had had committed to that project, at least in a resolution. So, we're gonna, we're gonna have needs to find a lot of money. Uh, and I wanna, and, uh, 'cause I wanna build a lot of sidewalks, 'cause I know Council Lady Waddell, and I wanna build a lot of sidewalks, a lot of sidewalks. So, I'm telling, I'm saying this, staff, because I don't wanna be looking at a bunch of new capital improvement plans, when we really don't need to be spending that money. We've gotta build this stadium, we gotta fix this parking deck, we've gotta get this thing going, 'cause it's a major economic development project. But other than that, I'm gonna be real slow to support any anything else except sidewalks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, you mixed about four or five different things. So, the focus now, at this point, um, is, I think we have had a round or two. Uh, I think I've gotten to everybody at least once or twice. Uh, need a motion, then we'll continue to have this discussion and a- take action. Uh, Councilman Art? Uh, Mr. Chris?
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve the, uh, requirement for the, uh, CFO to go forth to the local government commission with a request for us to float a limited obligation bond, not to exceed eight million dollars, for the three projects listed, baseball, pool, and parking garage. That is my motion. Doesn't say anything about spending that money, says to go forward to get approval to float an eight million dollar limited obligation bond.
All right, it's a motion I had a second by Councilmember Waddell. Madam Attorney, are you coming in for, uh, something procedural?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm good.
Okay. All right, so there's a motion by Councilmember Chris, a second by Councilmember Waddell, uh, to approve, uh, discussion phase. I'll say my piece, and and I guess that will do it. Um, we've identified tonight that there was one point nine million dollars, uh, unanticipated, went back in the general fund. Um, tonight's discussion, uh, is not about the support of the items that are on this list, 'cause I I voted for for all three at the appropriate time. This is about how you fund it, in a responsible way. And I don't think it's responsible to prepare to borrow money that you have no plans on borrowing, if that is the case, uh, and to potentially cost taxpayers additional interest, uh, that they would not have to pay, if you're gonna choose to do it. And I think the staff has enough to do without us posturing to do things that we really don't plan to do, if that is the case. Now, we have a reserve balance, we have money that was unanticipated. There are other ways to get here, as well as the fact that this contract, that this conversation is ongoing, that these guys do not have solid costs yet, they do not know what their shortage is, and they have not completed this packaging. And so, I think that this is a hasty judgment, and not a good use, but I think that's my two p- that's my piece, and we'll get ready to vote. Madam Waddell?
Thank you, sir. I just wanna clarify that my support of the second of this motion is that I do believe that there are some things that we have in the hopper that we need to prepare for, and I want to be sure that we are not putting ourselves under unnecessary time restrictions and constraints, should this be, not if this is, but but not when this is, but should this be the direction that we have to go. It is still my my urge to you and to every member of our staff, that we look for every opportunity to avoid these these absorbent fees that we may incur if we go this route. But I do wanna make sure that we, as a council, are prepared to move forward, if this is the route that we have to go. And I reiterate what what Mayor Colvin said, this is not support of any particular project or any particular funding, it is simply preparatory work. So, I just wanted to be very clear about that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilman Dawkins? Oh, all right, you're a little ahead of yourself. Uh, any other comments before we vote? Okay, so, uh, Councilman Cullerton, I think, was first, and then Art?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted clarification, 'cause there's been some discussion of the, uh, motion Councilmember Chris made. Uh, what I heard was not what the staff recommendation of approval of the bond, or spending of the bond, but rather that they are authorized to go forth and solicit the ability to get the bond, and therefore, if we decide to spend that money on those three projects, we will have that avail- available as an option, not approval to fund the bond and use the bond. If he could clarify that.
Okay, if it's if it's to clarify that, because you have somebody in front.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I did mention the baseball, the pool, and the parking garage. I believe I'm correct, that he has to specify to the local government commission specifically what we intend to use this money for, if we use the money. This motion is not to spend this money. This motion is to gain approval and authority from the local government commission for us to float an eight million dollar bond is necessary, as necessary, a limited obligation bond.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Art?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Chris, thank you for that, and Councilmember Cullerton. Yeah, I I just was reading through the option that was presented, and 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 in the final part of the option, it says, and request the local government commission to approve the bonds in the trust agreement and the proposed financing. I just wanna make sure that we're clear on the motion that we have in there as necessary.
As necessary, I said that.
I I know, but I just wanna make sure, I don't want there to be any doubt, because I know what's in the agenda packet, and that's what the public saw, okay? If they looked at the agenda packet, that is not what we're approving tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other, uh, comments before we vote? All right. Counsel, we look to you to vote to approve, or not. Madam Clerk, that motion carries seven to three. Those voting in favor, uh, Councilman Chris, Cullerton, Art, Moan, Jensen, Dawkins, Waddell. Those voting against, Councilmembers Wright, Colvin, and Hare. Item nine point zero one, Mr. Hume.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, we're here requesting, uh, tonight, the approval of a student semester bus pass. And last year, as we were going through our fair fair increase hearings, I think council gave us clear direction that you wanted us to do a better job of marketing and focus more on increasing increasing ridership. And we've done that in this past year. I think we're starting to see that trend, uh, reversing, and, uh, we're gonna be providing more of that at our, the fact committee's gonna be making its report on May thirteenth, and we'll provide some more information on that. But working with the fact committee, uh, we have, uh, been working on a plan to reach out to our younger generations and their parents to get, uh, them used to the benefits of riding, running transit. And Mr. Waddell's been sort of, our chairman's been leading that effort, or, uh, helping us in that effort, and he's here tonight to support that. Uh, the one item we've been working on has been, um, uh, since last fall, has been a student semester bus pass. Um, we proposed it in our fee schedule for the coming year, but as we started working on it, uh, you know, even though that pass won't really take effect, or won't start being used till next year, we really need to start promoting it, getting it exposed to parents and students, uh, this year. And so, that's why we are here early, requesting approval ahead of the normal fees, uh, fee schedule. Uh, we have met with and plan to start in the fall with Fayetteville State as a pilot project, and then we hope to expand that program with with your all's approval, uh, to colleges, and even eventually maybe into pre-collegiate students. Uh, we've proposed a price of seventy-five dollars per semester, and then a fifty-five dollar for a summer pass, and that summer pass would cover both terms, summer terms at at Fayetteville State. Uh, the pa- full pass, the fall pass would be valid from this, uh, I'm sorry, August first through the December thirty-first, and then the spring pass would be valid from January first to May to to May thirty-first. Um, our current thirty-day student pass is thirty dollars, so this is a significant discount. Uh, Fayetteville State students, uh, and student affairs staff that we've met with are excited about this as a new pass. They recognize the the void that's been created by the, uh, by the the pass program that that, uh, we used to have, that we no longer do. Uh, we've done a considerable amount of research about what others have done with semester passes, and I can't say that semester passes are prevalent in our business. They are in certain places, uh, but, uh, we have looked at those places that do have, uh, semester passes, and we've sort of tried to compare our our monthly pass rate with the student, their semester student pass rates. Um, and one of the things that we learned in our research, that a lot of this, a lot of the places, particularly in San Diego, and San Diego has a program, they probably have thirty or forty colleges or schools that are involved in it, and a lot of those pay different rates, because the schools choose to subsidize that rate a little bit, so you can buy it down. And we've talked to Fayetteville State about that. I don't think they're ready to do it right now, but it's something that they may be able to fit into their budget in the future. So, uh, I thank you for your consideration, and I'd be glad to try to answer any of your questions.
Uh, do have a few questions. Uh, Councilman Chris, Hare, and Waddell?
Mr. Mayor, I sent an email, I sent two, I sent one on April the second, to council and to Ms. Hill, and I sent one again today to council and to Ms. Hill and to senior staff members. My concern was this. Uh, Mr. Hume said seventy-five dollars semester, fifty-five dollars summer, and thirty dollars month. Is that correct?
Well, I, we we already have a thirty-dollar, thirty-day. We already have a thirty-dollar thirty.
That's what you're proposing, though, with this, uh, semester transit pass proposed program, right?
Right, it'd be a seventy-five dollars.
And and what I said to all of you, and I stand by this, most of you here went to college, you didn't have a dime in your pocket most of the time that you were there. In my day, we existed on peanut butter, and now they exist on ramen noodles, okay? I suggested to you, and and let's be real, transit is not gonna make any money on this program. I suggested that we charge not seventy-five, but fifty-five dollars for a semester pass, forty dollars for the summer session, and leave the monthly pass at thirty dollars. You may not think twenty dollars is a lot of money. It's not to you and me. I paid that to get my car washed. But the college student over there at Fayetteville State University have very limited funds. If we're going to help them, let's help them, all right? We're not gonna make any money on this. So, why can't we do fifty-five dollars for the semester pass, forty dollars for the summer session, and thirty dollars, as it currently is, on a monthly pass? That's, that was my proposal. I didn't hear back from any council member on this, and so I floated my email again today to all of you. But I'm very passionate about this. I had to live on peanut butter, bread, and didn't have no bread to go with it. Sometime, we ate it with our finger. I'm serious. Used to get that peanut butter from the welfare, in the big can, and that's what we had to eat. And these kids are the same way. There's a lot of them, if they miss, if they miss the dining room, it's ramen noodle. Now, they need transportation. The ones that need this transport are the ones that don't have any cars. I'm not talking about the soldiers going to school over there. I'm talking about the students that need to get on the bus, all right? And I say fifty-five dollars, I don't know what that'll do to your budget, Mr. Hume, tell me, because I'd like to make a motion that we do it at fifty-five, uh, what did I say, fifty-five, forty, and thirty. How does that go into your, well, the mayor's not called for a motion yet.
Let me see. We already, we already have the thirty-dollar pass, so there, you know, a thirty-day pass, so over, whether you count three and a half months or four months in the semester, you know, right now, you have some people that are already paying a hundred and twenty dollars, if they're, if you do this whole time, a hundred and fifty dollars. So, those are people that that potentially will be paying less and could cost us revenue. I I I'm very positive that I think this will increase our revenue, because we're, the way we calculated this, you know, what was was very, very conservative, in that we looked at basically those that were used in the past before, and broke those down into three, three different groups. Those that are currently riding, and those those we potentially could lose money on, and then those that, uh, you know, a couple different groups that would potentially be new riders, or, you know, at Fayetteville State, it's actually riders, I mean, that we lost from one point to another, that we're hoping to get a good portion of those back.
Paying a hundred and twenty, Mr. Hume, 'cause that's what we demand of them at this point. I'm trying to help these kids, and they are kids, the ones that's on the buses, okay? If we're gonna help them, let's help them, all right? And and let's make it as cheap as we can for them. They need to get from point A to point B. They don't have cars. And I don't want my daughter, or granddaughter, or your granddaughter, getting in a car with people she don't know, trying to go from the campus to the mall. Let's be real, okay? I'd rather have her getting on the bus. That's all I got to say, Mr. Mayor.
All right, uh, Councilman Hare?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, Mr. Chris, I, I, uh, support your your thoughts, and I was gonna tell you tonight, the reason I did not respond back. Uh, Mr. Hume, as we, uh, look at this, you s- you stated that FSU showed support?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Whenever you had that discussion with them, who were you, uh, speaking with? Did you speak with students?
We 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 met with a few students, uh, and, uh, actually, we had, we met with those students before they had their last student government assoc- association meeting, and, uh, met with the new president of that, and she's very adamant about needing needing transit. You know, they they replaced us with a car share program, they only have a couple cars, and so, they they recognize the need for this. And the the others we'd meet with, and we meet with regularly, are the, uh, is the Student Affairs, uh, Associate Dean of Student Affairs, or.
They're very involved.
Chancellor. And and so, they're very involved, and they're very supportive. They're also working with us to provide, uh, more, uh, more ways to get to the students in terms of getting in their information packets. We like to get on their website. They haven't agreed to that yet, but we're working on that. Uh, also, we're, I think there's six, uh, there's six sessions in June for new students, then we're gonna be at each one of those, uh, presenting our information. And again, we wanna get our information, not only to the students, but also to the parents, 'cause a lot of times, some of the parents may wanna just buy this as a safety net for their for their for their kids. And I think as we go forward, we're hoping that will work, uh, wi- with other schools as well.
Yeah, I I think I would be very favorable in entertaining, uh, maybe looking at a lower cost. But also, uh, getting back to, well, bringing up the subject of the route that we lost, that ran through Langdon, Seabrook, and I think it came back out to Merkison Road.
Yes, on Pennsyl.
If this passes, or or we can get this support moving forward, will that route return? Is that, or?
That is not part of this, that's really part of this plan, 'cause that that actually requires, you know, budget money, you know? So, uh, this this, uh, this is to really to continue to increase ridership, and hopefully increase revenues.
So, then, i- i- if this is, then the stop that we're looking at, if we'll, I know we're not talking about stops or route, will we be looking at, uh, the use of, um, the one at the corner of Merkison Road and Langdon?
Actually, yeah, I think we have, uh, currently, we have three stops going each way on Merkison Road there that we that we look at, and, uh, actually, we're work- And actually, we're working on getting a shelter just past WT Brown. We're working with this, they've agreed in concept to put it there, but we are trying to get all the real estate stuff put together so we can add a shelter there. But we would have shelters, we'd have shelters on each side. Of course, there's one by the football stadium. There's one across the street, there's one at Bronco Square, and then this one, and I think there's another one in there too.
Yeah, okay. Thanks, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Councilman Waddell.
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. My question is, we have two universities and a, and a technical college in the city. Why are we only talking about this being implemented at FSU? It seems to me that if this were implemented at FTCC as well, we would see a lot of riders. I think when you look at FTCC in addition, you also are looking at a very crossover population. So you're not just targeting, you know, kids, you're looking at maybe even being able to positively affect some adults as well. So I, I really, I, I'm very supportive of this idea. I'm, I'm more supportive of it with the rate reduction. I think that $75 is too much. And I don't think that, I don't think we're looking for something to help us break even on transit. I think that models around the nation show you don't break even on transit. So I think that what we're really looking for is an increase in ridership so that we can, you know, there's a more positive impact on, on our bus situation in general. So I, I don't like $75, I like 55. I like looking at it at FTCC and, and FSU. I don't know if the ridership at, I, I don't know what demographic of Methodist is or if there's a bus that goes that way. But if there is, I think we should open it up to them too. And I just think that that would make it something that I could definitely be in support of. Thank you for this, I think it's a good idea.
And our plan is, Ms. Waddell, our, our, our plan is to expand to those. This is sort of the, the pilot project.
I think you should start with that though. I don't think that there's any reason, it's not, I don't think that it would be so difficult to, we're not asking for an investment from, from the universities at this point. So I don't think that there, it doesn't seem that there would be a need to roll it out one place at a time. It, it's something that I think really could be, and I don't mean to sound harsh, if I sound harsh, forgive me. But I, I think that it's something that we could really implement at all three of these universities, or the two universities and the technical college with, with minimal impact because it's not something that we're asking for them to do. We're offering it to their student population, we're not asking them for anything in return as I read it. Now, please correct me if I'm wrong about that.
I, I do know that community colleges are different in terms of their, their current ridership. And so when I, when I mentioned before, you have a lot of those students that are already paying the $30 per month. And so you're going to greatly reduce their, their rate. And so that will impact, that could impact our overall ridership, how much of that we make up in terms of new riders. You know, we've made our projections. I, I, my projection is we will gain more than we will lose, but that, that's something that was still to be proven. Methodist actually, from my perspective, to add Methodist is a winner all around because we don't get that many riders from there. And so the fact that we do have bus service there, so that's an easy rollout. But I think to FTCC, and again, FTCC works on a quarter basis, I think, instead of semesters. So it, it, we may need to bring back something slightly different for them.
Well, I, I am, I'll just say this, I'm probably only going to be supportive of something like this if there's an inclusion for FTCC because I can, I'm looking at the demographic, I've spent a lot of time on that campus. I have a daughter at that campus. I know that there are, there are young people there who need this. So I, I don't know if, you know, I don't know, I just think that it should definitely be something that should be included. So I don't know how long it would take to add that in there, but I would definitely encourage you to do that.
Good. All right, Councilman Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is ironic that I was getting ready to say the exact same thing that Councilmember Waddell was getting ready to say. So, and I have it written down right here. And, you know, Methodist does have a place where you can, they do have a bus route. And it is a no-brainer. And I, I can, I can support this, but I cannot support it unless you bring them in. Because what I will say to that is when we started the millennial meetings, there were students there, there is a huge international contingency of people that come to school there, and they never even knew we had a downtown. And the bus stop is right there near the bank, right there before the campus. So I don't understand if we're going to do for one, we need to do for both because the bus stop is already there. So I, I am in support of it. I do want to say, another point that I wanted to make, this is the second time that you have come up and Mr. Morell has come up too, and they have asked us for a certain rate and we have told them both times, no, it's too high. So I know that you were supposed to be at the work session and it didn't happen, but before they come back up next time, I, I would have really liked this to be a work session item so we could have had this all taken care of instead of, you know, no one talking about the FTCC and the Methodist and the FSU. But I think the only way that it really can work is to bring all three of them in. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Mr. Mr. Morell, you have something you wanted to add? Because I, my question was, what, what are your citizen advisory folks saying? Because, you know, we tend to look at things from a profit, nonprofit only point of view. So, Mr. Morell, I want to hear from him.
Mayor, City Council, to address your concern, well, two concerns that you have. First one, the reasons why we're slowly rolling this out. And I don't think Mr. Hughes will omit this, but their staff is limited. Their staff is staffed as if they were back in, when I was in high school, 1980. You look at their staffing and we addressed this issue in the past, they're limited. Their marketing person wears three and four hats. Now, why I mention this and to every one of your points, the buses travel those routes today, but we just don't have the marketing personnel to go out and market the bus, the city and what we have to offer. So why we're attempting this process in a smaller scale because we only have the staffing and the manpower to handle it accordingly. Now, I know the teams that Mr. Hughes do utilize to this has taken up quite a bit of time just to meet and to discuss the proposals with the FSU's group. After we bottle it and package it, then they've got all the details that can roll it out quickly to the other universities. So that was the reasons why we decided to target it and to support the city's council's belief that we can make this happen. Because from my understanding, we tend to want this, but we don't want to pay for this. And this meaning you want a lot done, but you don't want to pay for the staffing to get it done. And that's what they need. So that's the one point. Regarding the cost, now, $75, yes, we're targeting, targeting the parents to support this. And if the parents can't spend 60 cent per day, because that's what it rolls out to, 60 cent per day through a semester, then you, we've got bigger issues because that's what it rolls out. When you say 55, it could be free then. So throw in that number here and there, look at what it rolls down to individual bus rides. Because as we discussed it on a committees level, we're talking about where the students are interested in going. They want to go to the mall, they want to go to movie theaters, they wanted to go a place to buy their groceries. That's the feedback they wanted from us. And, and head downtown as well. So we felt that would be a good financial outlay to the parents to make this happen.
Well, thank you. And I, and I think our concern was not, could the parents afford it? It's only costing the city 39, 2100 to $3900. So what we were saying was that if we could make it even more affordable, because that was our problem before was when you had a lack of ridership, you needed to bring the price down, not up. But I know he, he caused this a deal, but I think that's where the council was. So we have a lot of questions, a lot of lights, and we're going to try to wrap this up, you all, you have, have some inclement weather out there. So Councilman, Jensen, you were finished?
Oh, I have another question.
No, 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 no. Councilman Dawkins, I'll come back, get your red, I'll come back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last I looked, we, and thank you, Mr. Hughes, thank you, Mr. Morell, we lose a couple million dollars a year on, on our transit. So, Mr. Command Sergeant Major Chris, I was waiting a second, your motion, I'm, I'm with you. So when you're ready to go, let's, let's go. I tell you, once we run out of space on our buses, once we fill them up, because I want to fill up our buses, then, then we'll bump it up some. But I want to see if this will work. I, I want to see if this will work by reducing the price and maybe generating some excitement. So, thank you. I'm, I'm going to support you Sergeant Major when you do your, pull the trigger. Thank you.
All right, Councilman Art.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our problem is ridership and you don't increase ridership by increasing fees. I mean, it's just a supply and demand model and I don't care where you go, you don't raise, you don't raise the fee to get more people, you lower the fee. And I'm a no vote if we don't lower the fee and if we don't include FTCC and Methodist, okay? If we're going to offer it to one group, we need to offer it to the other group. And I can tell you, I've ridden the bus, Councilwoman Jensen rode with me one day, we went through FTCC, there were a lot of people using the bus at FTCC. And it's not fair to, and a lot of those folks are working people who are working and going to school, okay? And it's not fair to charge them a higher price than what we're going to charge for another group. So if we don't make it for everybody, I'm, I'm a no vote.
So, sir, is there any truth to the fact that you don't have the capacity to do it from a staff perspective? And we, we haven't seen a request from you to add personnel?
No, it, it, it is, it is, capacity is, is an issue. That doesn't mean that we won't do our best to try to, to try to make it happen. And again, I think, you know, Methodist is not going to be, I don't see it as a big, a big problem. And, and really, it is not with FTCC, other than, I, the only caution that is that it, it potentially could cost, cost more because you have student, you have heavy ridership there and a lot of them are paying already $30, I mean, $30 a month. And so now they're going to be paying $55 for a semester. So there is a potential revenue loss, but if, if you all want to do that, I mean, I'm not, I'm not opposed to it. I like to, I like to increase ridership. But we do, we are, we are, we are real tight on, on staff. And so, you know, it, trying to focus and do something, trying to do something very well i- is what we wanted to do and that's why we were focused on.
Mr. Manager, did you know they were tight on staff over there?
Yes, sir. We are, one of the things that Randy, I think, tried to, we didn't do very well is we missed the deadline for this to be on the work session. We did not know it would generate this level of interest. And so we asked at your meeting if it was something that we could put on for tonight. And had we foreseen the level of interest that council has, we would have scheduled it for May. Randy's desire to have it heard as quickly as possible so that we could start marketing to them for their summer sessions, again, that was our mistake. What he was trying to do as well with this item of going from $30 per month, which is currently being charged, was to try to give them a semester rate of $75. And a semester usually is what, four months, three and a half, four months? And so we did feel that it was cost-effective for the students. But as, as Mr. Crisp and others have said, if the council wants to make it even more attractive, that of course is council's choice. But we do again apologize that with the tight agenda we had at the meeting for last Monday, it did not make it to the agenda. But in an interest to try to get this ready and approved for council so that we could sell it for the upcoming summer session, we were running out of days to do that. But we have learned, have heard you very clearly.
Why, why do we get everything at the last minute, like day before the deadline?
It was, you and I and Mayor Protem have talked about the length of the work sessions and trying to limit those to three hours.
But that was still a tight fit.
Yes, sir. It was, and we ran out of time that night as well with those items which were on there. It was a calculated risk, one that did not pay off here. We thought that trying to accommodate a semester ridership with a lower fee for a rollout of FSU, and we even tried to include on the second page of the CAM that this was a trial pilot program and we would then try to push it over to Methodist as well. But again, I'm sorry that we, this did need to go to a work session as Mrs. Jensen said and that didn't happen.
All right. Who do we, Councilman Art, did we get you? Yeah, all right. So I think we've got everybody. We lit up like a Christmas tree back here, green, red. All right, council, it's time to vote, so.
What's the motion?
Somebody needs to make one.
I pushed my red button.
I mean, it's time to start the process of voting.
I pushed my red button, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, all right, I had to clear, clear them, so I apologize. So Councilman Chris.
Mr. Mayor, let me make a point here.
You can go ahead.
Before I make a motion. I don't have a problem with this pilot program, but I can tell you now I have a problem with discrimination. And while we're doing this for one set of students at one university, we're compelling students at other universities to pay full price. There's something wrong with that picture, okay? Inherently wrong. And so we've got two courts of action. One, we could go back to a work session and work this out, but then that's delaying again, so I'm not in favor of that. What I am in favor of, and this is my motion, that we reduce this fee for the pilot program to $55 per semester, $40 for the summer session and leave the monthly pass at $30 and direct staff to find a way to bring in Methodist University and Fayetteville Technical Community College into this same program. That's my motion.
More staff.
At the same time, right?
I give them three months to get it done with the other two universities, at the maximum.
All right, so, so I take it that your motion was to approve with the modifications of the price initially to Fayetteville State with a specified time for adding on to other schools, is that correct?
Three months, three months, that takes.
All right. Was it, was that a, was that a second by you? Was there a second to his motion?
Discussion.
We can't get a discussion until we have a second. Do we have a second or the motion dies?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dawkins. Just brief discussion, we've discussed the discussion. So wait, wait, wait. So, all right. Okay, so let me, let me clear the board, hit it if you would like to participate in discussion. Okay. All right. Councilman Wright.
My question would be, realistically, how long do you think it would take to bring the other two colleges on board? Because, you know, we were talking 90 days, but we're trying to get it done as soon as possible so these students can participate in the savings of, of funds as well. So realistically, how soon can we get that done so all the colleges can participate?
Again, if, if you all approve it, we will, we can make it available to all the, all the, all the students and all the colleges.
That's all I need to know.
It's, I think it's how well we promote it to get it rolled out. And, and again, try to work out some of the differences between their terms and stuff.
Well, you know, you, you, you have a lot of media tools here in the city to make it happen. If we utilize those tools effectively, and I think other outlets as well throughout the city, I think we can make that happen. Marketing is key. So if we focus on it, we can get it done. Wouldn't you agree?
Yes, sir.
All right.
All right, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. So a normal 30-day pass is 40 bucks, if I remember.
An adult price.
Okay. And then for students, it's reduced to 30.
It's 30, yes.
30, $30 a month, and that's 30 days or 31 days or 28 days?
It's 30 days consec, it's 30 days from the first time you use.
From the first time you use it, okay. And so if a semester is, say, three months, that would be, you know, 90 bucks at the current rate. If a semester is four months, it would be 120. That, some students are currently paying.
Yes, sir.
And so let's use the one, let's say 110, let's cut it a little bit half. So going from 110 to 75, you got a $45 savings. You drop it down to 55, you got a 65, now you're paying less than 50%. What do senior citizens pay for a 30-day rolling pass? Do you know off the top of your head?
I, I believe they pay $17.
17, right. And so, me personally, for the colleges, you know, 75 and 50 for a semester and summer semester is already a good discount. They already get a, they already get a 25% discount from a regular person like all of us sitting up here. You get 25% discount a month. I don't know, so that's just my comment. I'm, I'm good with what staff's proposing.
Okay. Councilman Jensen. Okay. Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If, if I recall, we had a program at Fayetteville State at one time. Is that correct?
We, we did. They, actually, all of their students could ride for free. They, they got a pass that we provided. They could ride for free.
Okay.
And that, and part of that was Fayetteville State was paying us about, what was supposed to be about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to support that Route eleven that Councilman Hare mentioned.
Okay. And they canceled it because?
Because they couldn't afford it anymore.
Okay. So when we did, so did we, we still have buses that go out there, and they had the rate, correct? They had the student rate?
They have the student rate. They have the rate that all, that's all students pay.
Okay. So then, have we ever had anything with Methodist?
We, we actually talked to Methodist when we set up the FSU program, and Methodist was not interested. Methodist wasn't interested. They didn't feel, they didn't want to invest in it. They didn't feel that their students would, would use it. And so, we, we've had discussions with them since in terms of how to bring them in in different ways, and, and not, you know, not be like Fayetteville State, where they're paying so much per student, and the students are getting it for free. That's what Methodist was not interested in.
What is the ridership from Fayetteville State right now? Is it?
I, I believe our, I think it's, let me look up here. I think currently, we're carrying monthly about just over seventeen hundred a month.
Okay. Do you have the numbers for Methodist?
I, I do not, no.
Okay. So, I, I am going to be in the same boat as Councilmember Art. I really think that this is a good idea, but I cannot, I, I just can't agree with it if it's just for one. If we can, I don't understand really what the issue will be, because there's already a bus route that runs through Methodist. I, I do get where the concern is with FTCC. I do get that concern, because you have working people that are going to school part-time. But then again, as Councilmember Waddell said, we also have high schoolers that are going back and forth, too. So it's a double-edged sword. But I do think that, and if we cannot put all three in, I just don't see where I can support it. And I think if we're going to start with one, we need to start with all of them, especially the universities. If we're going to start with, we need to do both universities. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Waddell.
I'm good, sir. Thank you.
Councilman Hare.
Yes, sir. My questions have been answered. Just wanted to make, make sure all three are included in the pilot program. I'm fine.
Councilman Art.
So thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and I appreciate all the comments of my colleagues. Mr. Manager, I think the council has been pretty clear tonight. And that is, there's an interest in doing all three, these institutions. And, and I would recommend that we use our strategic marketing department, advertising department that we have. We have Faye TV, we have Facebook, we have Twitter, we have Instagram, we can do PSAs. There's all kinds of ways that we can get this word out. We can coordinate with these institutions, FTCC, Methodist, FSU, ask them to put it on their social media platforms. It doesn't have to be a paid ad in the Fayetteville Observer. There are ways you can get information out. And, and let me just tell you, these students aren't reading the Fayetteville Observer, okay? They're reading what comes across on Twitter, or Instagram, or Facebook. They don't do Facebook. Old people like me do Facebook. And, and, but yeah, I mean, they're doing Instagram and Snapchat and that kind of stuff. And that, you just got to get the word out there, so we can coordinate with those different institutions to get the word out. But, but I say it again, you don't get more ridership raising fees. And then, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to come back, I'm going to do a council member request on what we're doing for our high school athletes and club members during the summer, because we got a huge high school population that come August will need ways to get to school, so that they can be a part of school activities, which is where we want them. And so, we, we've kind of fumbled on this in the past. We need to be prepared. So I'm giving you a warning order now, that I'm going to be coming back with this as a council member request.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, I think we had thorough discussions. All right. So, want to repeat the motion, Mr. Crisp? Hit your mic, please.
Mr. Mayor, my motion is to move forward with the Fayetteville State U pilot program with fares at fifty-five dollars per semester, forty dollars for the summer session pass, and leave the monthly pass at thirty dollars, and give ninety days to staff to bring in Methodist and Fayetteville Technical Community College into the program.
All right. It's a motion by Councilmember Crisp. And who was his second? Councilman Dawkins. All right, counsel, look to you for your votes. Okay. Mr. Crisp, you had a couple of questions you want to clarify.
We're approving, we're approving the pilot program effective now. And so, ninety days from now, I'm hopeful that we will have brought.
So this, this vote is for ninety days. So I re-cleared the board. This is a vote to approve with the modifications as described within ninety days. Need votes from Moan, Jensen, and Wright.
I'm confused.
This is to approve with a ninety-day, uh, plan for the, initially approve the pilot, ninety days for the other two.
You want me to restate the motion?
Yes. I'd like to make a friendly amendment. I'd like to propose.
It's, it's been seconded already, so, yeah. So it can, you can vote for it up or down, and then you can propose a new one if, miss. All right. So, counsel, we'll vote again. The motion he stated was to approve the pilot with a ninety-day requirement to come back with implementation plan for the other schools. That's the motion that's on the floor. Look to you for your votes for that. Okay. All right. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries six to four. Those voting in favor, Crisp, Cullerton, Wright, Colvin, Hare, and Dawkins. Those voting against, Art, Moan, Jensen, and Waddell. Motion carries. All right, counsel, look to you for.
Mr. Mayor, before we adjourn.
Oh, yeah. I had an announcement. Yes, sir.
Uh, if I could have Mr. Rada come up and make a quick announcement.
Very, very, very quick.
We can change our. Yes, sir. So we just wanted to let you know from an email I sent out earlier today, mayor and council, that we will be doing a press conference in here tomorrow to speak with the media and to get out to the public the information we've got on what's going to be available for event parking for our first baseball game, which is here on April eighteenth, next Thursday, as well as future events that are going on downtown. So the short answer to this is, right now, it's available on the city app. The residents can go down there and read the information, or you can go on our website at fayettevalencie.gov/downtownparking. And that information can be found there. But after tomorrow's meeting, we'll record what takes place in here. We'll broadcast it on Faye TV, we'll push it out on social media, and we'll push it out on all the other places that we've got as well, to let folks know what's going on with that.
Yeah, I want to, I want to thank Mr. Rada. They've done a lot of work. Been a lot of questions about parking, and so excited about them getting this plan out tomorrow.
All right. Thank you. All right. Counsel, see you later.